Welcome to the Tuesday, February 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order, suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming the meeting on Channel 12, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible. Meeting. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made. We'll call vote. As we are remote, there is no pledge of allegiance. We will start with correspondence. Kevin?
Thank you, Ryan. The following correspondence was recorded. An email from Ms. Kayla Worland, Music Department Chair and Teacher at Long Meadow High School, dated January 22nd, 2021, regarding students named to the All Eastern State Ensemble, and an email from Ms. Georgia Robert, dated January 24th, 2021, regarding music instruction during the pandemic. That's it for correspondence.
Thank you. And we do not have any minutes for approval, but now we are up to visitor comments. Are there any visitors who would like to speak? Please make yourself known, and I will call on you. Seeing none, we'll move on to school committee announcements and recognitions. Members, any announcements or recognitions you'd like to make? Gianna?
Thank you, Ryan. I just wanted to, there's some fun news coming out of Williams Middle School, and I just wanted to thank Senoras Jalinas and Kent Jemmy and the students who participated in what was called an amazing Spanish cooking class revolving around the Three Kings. The students made Mexican hot chocolate and pastry during Zoom class, and I just thought that was super fun and engaging for everybody. So thank you all to made that happen.
Thank you. Anyone else with another announcement or recognition? Seeing none, we will move on to our business with guests. Marty, that is the budget presentation.
Thank you. I will screen share here to pull up the. Alright, thank you. So anyone that might be watching at home, anybody in Zoom with us, this is the annual public hearing for the budget recommendation that was initially brought to the school committee last week. And next week, the school committee will deliberate the budget further, and we will see fit opening any or other of these recommendations. The budget process follows a sort of a well-defined path. It begins in the fall where we hear from the town treasurer on some of the projections for revenue and expenditures that the town is expecting. And so we try to stay in close communication with our town partners to understand what the what the challenges are in terms of the larger town budget. And in turn, we discuss with them the challenges and the opportunities that we're looking at for the for the coming fiscal year. So the slide deck largely mirrors the recommendation that the school committee heard last week. Tried to put a finer point on a few items that were of special interest to the committee, and we can talk about those further as we go through. So the the road ahead, I'm gonna see if I can escape the. Photo there that won't be displayed, but that's okay, I guess. The road ahead is an interesting one for us. I think each year there are variables that we must contend with. But this year, I think the road ahead has a few more twists and turns than we would normally expect. And I think we see some hope at the end of this road, but we also have to recognize that there's a lot that we still need to understand and uncover as we make some critical decisions about the FY22 budget. And as I, as we often say, the budget that is brought to the committee at this point is only a recommendation. And then even after the committee votes a budget and passes it along to the town, there are always decisions to be made within that pie, within the budget pie that is voted by the school committee, and then there are other factors, including grants, that influence the the decisions that we make. So the path of the pandemic is something that we are going to have to continue to try to understand. We have been all dealing with a new pandemic certainly for close to a year now. I think we're still trying to understand what path this pandemic will take. There is some, there are hopeful signs in terms of the vaccination that is under the vaccination plans that are rolling out underway. But we also know that there are variants of the virus that we need to pay attention to. And we also recognize, as a committee member has pointed out, I think, last week, that the vaccination largely is unavailable to school-aged children. So those are, those are important considerations for us in terms of understanding the path of this pandemic and how it will shape the 22 budget. I will quickly note with regard to vaccination, I think we were, as those of us who work in pre-K to 12 setting, I think we're all starting to learn that the governor had reordered the Phase 2 of the vaccination rollout in a way that essentially pushed pre-K to 12 staff further down on the list. And I think as we work hard to, you know, find as much in-person learning as possible to maximize in-person learning, that was something that was a surprise to us and even to the town officials that were busy putting together a municipal vaccination clinic. So we'll continue to pay attention to that and try and get the best information that we can and try to understand when vaccination, when the vaccination will become available to pre-K to 12 staff and how it would be administered. The other thing that is a variable that we'll have to continue to understand is what exactly is academic and social-emotional learning needs to be coming here. I think we all recognize that this pandemic will have a lingering effect on children and a different effect on every child. I think we'll see that the, some of the learning gaps that were already present among students will have widened, and we'll be facing some gaps that we know we will have to address. And certainly, the SEL challenges that this pandemic has presented to the young people is something that we also have to understand. And we are committed to being responsive to that. And our administrative team right now is working to really drill down and get some good data on exactly what those needs would be and how we can respond to those needs. So there's some clarity that is emerging, but I think we will try to understand how these factors will shape the FY22 budget. So I reordered this question in our presentation. I think this budget presents a sort of a critical question for us. And that is, do we develop a budget that is reflective of the broad-based FY21 budget in terms of service and staffing levels? Or do we develop a budget that is reflective of the service and staffing levels that we have had to put in place in response to the pandemic? In the sense that we have had to add additional section of the minimum staff to respond to the special distance standard, the six-foot standard that is required for us to offer in-person learning. So that is something that I think is sort of the critical question. I will be, just to be clear, this budget recommendation that is being presented tonight, it is a budget that is more reflective of the service and staffing levels that would have been part of the, reflected in the FY21 budget. That is not to say, I want to emphasize this, that is not to say that we will not be in a position to, you know, put important health and safety requirements in place or to respond to student needs if the pandemic continues to be a factor for us. And so, you know, we will, we will be in a position, because of the availability of federal stimulus funds, we will be in a position to respond to student needs as they are presented in the wake of this pandemic. And we will be in a position to respond to any health and safety requirements that might still be lingering in the fall when we're back in school. So I think, you know, it's important to recognize that the budget that is being recommended tonight is reflective of the FY21 service and staffing levels. But we will, going forward, be able to access these federal stimulus funds that are described in this slide to be sure that we can respond to any health and safety requirements or respond to any student needs as they're presented. The other thing that we can be clear about is that there are still remaining SIR-1 funds, elementary and secondary school relief funds, that could be applied to FY22. And I think we're also all aware that, at the federal level down in Washington DC, there's a lot of continued conversation about yet another stimulus package. And so those are other opportunities that we could tap into to, you know, apply the service and staffing levels that we would need if the pandemic continues to be a factor, or if, for example, we needed to staff at a level that required us to maintain the six-foot distance standard. So this budget, to be clear, doesn't, it doesn't assume that we will need to have a six-foot standard in place next year. But if necessary, if we learn that that is the case, we can leverage the opportunities that are depicted on this slide. So we will be in a position either way. So again, you know, if, looking ahead and knowing that students will have some very unique academic and social-emotional needs, to reemphasize the point that we would be able to leverage these stimulus funds to be sure, again, that we're responsive to health and safety. And then to drill down a little deeper, you know, what, how might we, what are we thinking about generally in terms of how we can respond to the needs that might be presenting themselves beginning next year? Smaller class size, making sure we're in a position to provide additional targeted supports, providing targeted professional development to staff. We're going to talk a little bit later about some of the UDL work that we're interested in. And then making sure, if we do find ourselves in the unlikely, that I'd say that we find ourselves having to teach in some remote arrangement, we want to make sure that we're able to continue to put the digital learning tools in the hands of staff and students. So, you know, these are, we know that we will need to, you know, do some very distinctive planning to address students' academic and social-emotional needs. And I'm confident that with this budget recommendation, we will be in a position to do that because of the availability of these federal stimulus funds, because of our ability to reallocate within the existing budget, and because we can also anticipate that beyond the SIR-2, there is likely going to be some additional stimulus funds available to us. And then certainly, if the needs are even more acute than can be handled by what we can tap into here, we certainly are always able to work with local town officials to identify some supplemental funds to make sure we are ready to respond to the path of this pandemic and respond to the needs that kids will have next year. So again, to drill down a little further, how will we, generally speaking, how will we be responding to student academic and social-emotional needs? We think that if we're kind of have that relentless focus on standards and understanding that, we want to make sure that if there's any catch-up needed, that we identify the essential priority standards, and we work hard to make sure that students, that we address those standards in classrooms next year. We also want to be in a position to address any inequities that present themselves and be sure that we are able to identify those needs using universal screening tools and that we can ensure that all students have that important equal access to curriculum and instruction. And then also supporting our teachers. We'll want to be sure that we are supporting teachers' ability to meet those unique needs that may present themselves next year. So the recommendation is, I want to, you know, sort of, I think it's important to start with how the budget ties into the commitments that we want to make to this community. We want to be clear about how this budget commits us to important school and district goals. And so what are the commitments that we can make with this budget recommendation? This budget will commit us to, above all, student and staff health and safety. That is always our number-one obligation. The district's contractual obligations, we want to be sure that we're in a position to continue to attract and attain the best educators. We have the best educators, and we want to make sure that we can meet the contractual obligations that come from the advances on steps and years of service that our educators will benefit from. Being sure that we have a full continuum of services and programs in place for regular and special education students. I think it is important, obviously, that we can demonstrate to this community that we are spending their tax dollars wisely and that we are operating in a cost-effective and sustainable manner. Always being responsive to shifting enrollment patterns and being sure that we can provide optimal class size. I think that favorable class size is an important commitment. It's an important value of this educational community. And this budget will allow us to maintain that commitment. Ensuring that we are creating inclusive, equitable experiences and outcomes for all students. We'll talk a little bit later about our commitment to multi-tiered systems of support, being responsive to the recommendations of CLE, which I hope is becoming a familiar acronym. CLE is the Center for Leadership and Educational Equity. We are engaged in a study with CLE right now. In fact, just today, we sent home a survey to staff and parents and high school students. So the recommendations that come out of that partnership with CLE is something that we want to respond to, to make sure that we're providing equitable access and outcomes for all students. This school committee has made a, along with our school leaders, along with our administrative team, has made a very specific commitment to anti-racism. And this budget will allow us to maintain that commitment. And we can talk a little bit about that in more detail shortly. And then, of course, supporting our educators, making sure that we have dedicated funding for curriculum renewal and adoption. That has been a priority focus of this committee. And in the coming year, we can expect that the funds that we have set aside will help us address elementary social studies and elementary math, two areas that will be under review in the coming year. This will ensure that we can continue to, with our program of universal screening, make sure we understand where students are and what their needs are. I'm excited that this budget will allow us to continue that commitment to career education programming. It's something that we have gotten off the ground at the high school. And I'm really excited that this is something that is potentially very transformative and offers kids opportunities to learn in real-world settings. And so expect to hear more from Mr. Landers on that in the weeks and months ahead. Then finally, PD focused that centers around multi-tiered systems of support and universal design for learning. So quickly, what does that mean? Again, a graphic that goes along with the slide didn't project, but we think that, you know, coming back next year, and we want to make sure that we're continued to be committed to differentiation, meaning that in every classroom, students have multiple ways of engaging with the material. They have multiple ways to express their learning. And that we're presenting that, the material, to them in many different ways. And so this is something that we think will assist us in terms of bringing students back to to that love of learning that perhaps has been compromised in the hybrid world that we're in. And we know that this has been a challenge for our students. But looking forward to next year, when we can get back to in-person learning and have students fully engaged and having the full range of opportunities to express their learning, and we have a full ability to present teaching and learning to them. The FY22 budget, some additional commitments. I would want to emphasize that this budget will allow us to continue to commit to technology integration. I think I'm so pleased with the way we have responded to this pandemic in terms of providing technology supports to families and staff and students. We'll be able to continue our commitment to one-to-one device deployment. And then Nick George, who I think might be on the call tonight, has a great plan in place to ensure that we have some redundancy on our internet connection to ensure uninterrupted access. One of the final things that we are exploring is the opportunity for electronic registration, making greater use of the parent portal on our school. I know as a parent, I never appreciated having a stack of papers to fill out. And these electronic registrations and forms will streamline that process and get us higher-quality data and hopefully make it easier on our families to get us the forms and registration information that we need. At your last meeting, the committee had understandably asked us to demonstrate the linkage between school and district goals and the resources and allocations that are provided for by this budget. And one turns the other. One energizes the other. And if we are committed to school and district goals, that means we need to put our money where our mouth is, and vice versa. If we put our money where our mouth is, we know that that will drive, in turn, school and district goals. So this is just one example. It's not meant to be an exhaustive explanation of the linkage between the resources and the goals that are important to us. But knowing that this is a very specific commitment that the school committee had made as part of its goals, I wanted to use this as an opportunity to demonstrate the linkage between the resources and allocations in the FY22 budget and this particular goal relating to anti-racism. And again, not meant to be an exhaustive account of the goals that are important to us, but this is one way to demonstrate how we put our resources where our goals are. Specifically, I want to highlight that first bullet, all curriculum and adoption materials. This committee has asked us to make sure that, as we're adopting materials, that we go through that process, making sure that the materials, the textbooks that are available to children are reflective of the experiences of historically marginalized groups and that we are, we have materials and textbooks that promote inclusivity and reflect the diversity, the great diversity of American life. One of the strong linkages that Sue and I discussed at length this week was the PD work that we know we can commit to with this budget. And we're sort of projecting that a significant portion of the PD budget, as it's defined here, would be directed at the work relating to equity and anti-racism, coaching sessions, facilitated PD, and then hopefully we're back. You know, I have opportunities to send folks to conferences and workshops, which has not been the case this year. As the grant money that is there, Title I, Title IV, Metco, as that grant money rolls in, that those are, we have plenty of opportunities to direct those funds towards anti-racism work. And also say that even right down to the Special Programs Committee, for which there is an allocation in this budget, we would want to make sure that the community engagement activities that we that we bring to this community, that we bring to parents, are reflective of this goal. And then certainly, the curriculum funds that are available to us would be ensure that we are being thoughtful in our choices for learning materials and textbooks for kids. All of these things, so, you know, the graphic is meant to demonstrate that all of our decisions relating to staff time, structural materials, professional development, all of those things are filtered through this goal, are looked at through this lens. So on to the, sort of the the nuts and bolts of this budget. This slide we discussed at length last week. And in some respects, it speaks for itself, but I know some of it needs explanation. I would start, excuse me, at the top right of this slide, noting that we have significant contractual obligations that we need to make. And that is projected at an increase of $903,000. That number has been fairly steady in recent years, and it's an obligation that we annually need to account for. And I think I would highlight that tonight, particularly for any, you know, town officials that are watching or community members that are watching, to understand that, you know, with over 400 employees, we naturally will have some obligations that we have to make and that we have to account for. we we naturally will have some obligations that we have to make and that we have to account for. The other thing that I would note in terms of the additions to this year's budget, we we have been fortunate in recent years that we have been able to contain out-of-district tuitions. And that is a credit to a team of people led by Jean Fontaine, who have worked really hard to educate children in their hometown and in their home school. So we've been very fortunate over the last several years to reduce out-of-district tuitions. But we do have some obligations to children that we need to meet in the coming year. And so you'll see an increase of $625,000 associated with out-of-district tuitions. On the other side of the ledger, you'll see that there are some reductions that we need to account for. We can anticipate that attrition-related savings will assist us with building the FY22 budget. There are a number of staff that will be retiring or have moved to different positions. And you'll also see on the left side that we're anticipating one less section at Blueberry Hill. That is not, that wouldn't affect the class size patterns that we have seen. It's simply that there are more sections sort of graduating from Blueberry Hill than than we're planning to see coming into Blueberry Hill in kindergarten. You'll note that with regard to Williams Middle School, on both sides of the spreadsheet here, we have a a large bubble group moving up to eighth grade. And we want to make sure we have appropriate staffing to ensure that class size doesn't increase at Williams in response to that to that bubble group, that that larger group moving from seventh grade into eighth grade. You'll note that there is a student support teacher at Longmont High School beginning last year. Principal Landers, who's on the call, had brought to the committee and brought to us a plan to provide more purposeful supports to general education students. So this is, this builds on that plan that Tom introduced last year. And then the career counselor additionally builds on the career education investment that the committee made last year. This, I want to be clear that the .5 FTE will allow us to have that as a a full-time position in FY22 in the coming school year. This year, it was only a half-year position. Next year, it is a full FTE over the course of a full year. So we need to increase that by a half of an FTE. There are some other miscellaneous increases and reductions that we can happily come back to if the committee has any specific questions. Worth noting, though, we do that, you'll see an increase associated with substitute salaries. We do want to make sure that we're competitive and that we have, we have some great substitutes that have been with us for many years. And we want to make sure that we have an adequate pool of substitutes. They are important to help us maintain consistency and keep learning going when staff need to be out for different reasons. You'll see that the the total increase on the budget, I want you to call attention to that 256,000 number at the bottom of your screen, and it will come up on the next slide. I need to. This this slide is sort of the highest level summary that we can provide to you and to the community, summarizing the FY22 budget. You will see in the bottom right that it is an increase of $256,000 over FY21. That's that's the the total budget, including the general fund revenue and the special revenue above. This is a general fund increase. It would it would be a request to the town for an increase in general fund revenue of $840,000 over FY21. And so what does that look like? Historically, you'll see that that $840,000 top left is the one of the, one of the larger increases that we have needed from the general fund in recent years. It's an increase of 2.35% over last year. But it needs to be considered against the number at the top right, which is the the total budget increase. It's a sort of a modest $256,000 over FY21. So as as the special revenue declines, then the general fund increase needs to needs to increase in order to assist with that. There is a slide here that relates to out-of-district tuitions. It's it's not showing up for some reason. I can pull it out of an earlier version if if need be. But what the slide demonstrates is that we've seen, again, out-of-district tuitions decrease in recent years. But we do have some students that we are eager to support in FY22 that will require an increase in our commitment to out-of-district tuitions. Another way of looking at the budget at a very high level, you'll see the 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 total proposed budget of $36,517,000. When that's the, that's the general fund portion of the budget. When the special revenue below is added in, Circuit Breaker, Metco, School Choice, and other grants, you'll see that it is a budget of $38,957,781. To break this down by FTEs, you will see that it is, it carries over, the staffing levels from FY21 are carried over to FY22. Not meant to suggest that it, you know, it's it's sort of an identical staffing pattern. It simply means that the total FTE, the full-time equivalent, is the same next year. Some quick snapshots of enrollment. This is for your review. You'll see that generally, our elementary classes, the large total cohorts are smaller than what we're seeing at middle and high. Sometimes those numbers go up as they move towards 12th grade. We'll say that our incoming K, if I remember the number correctly, Mr. Dergantis, it was at about 146, 145 students right now. So we are anticipating that we will need three sections at kindergarten at each of our three elementary schools. A projection of what we are anticipating at Blueberry Hill. Projection of what we are anticipating at Center School. You'll see that on the left-hand side, there was a three-and-one designation for third grade. You'll recall that the committee had added a section at third grade in response to some enrollment increases that we saw after the budget was voted last year. One of the, you know, every year, there are cohorts that we're watching that are on our watch list. So on our watch list for next year is first grade at Center School. That's a number that at 18.33, we do not have much wiggle room. If there are additional enrollments and registrations there, we may need to come back to the committee to respond to that. Similarly, at Wolf Swamp, third grade will want to track third grade, perhaps even second grade, to understand, you know, where enrollment is headed. Sometimes it goes up, sometimes it goes down. But but those are some classrooms that are on our watch list for next year. And certainly, you know, again, thinking about post-pandemic education or the needs that students will have next year, I think it would be wise to, you know, make some critical investments to keep down class size, to ensure that we can be responsive to student needs. So as we identify the needs, as we figure out exactly what stimulus money is available to us, and as we figure out what the enrollment trends are, we can certainly come back to the committee with some recommendations around how we might want to leverage those federal stimulus funds to make sure that we have, we can maintain that commitment to optimal favorable class size. Similarly, at the middle school, you'll see, these are averages. And Nicole Allen and Beth Nelson would want me to remind you that these are averages and that the ranges will be, there'll be classrooms that are at seventh and eighth grade above these averages and then classrooms that are below. And a lot of that depends on where kids fall with their foreign language and which math class they wind up in in seventh or eighth grade. It does assume, this budget does assume that we have that the additional staffing at eighth grade to ensure that we can keep down class size for that bubble class that is moving into eighth grade at Williams. This is, I want to highlight for anybody watching at home. This is important to look at the heading on this slide, FY21. The committee last week had voted to allow us to move forward with some investments that we can make this year using the FY21 budget. And I think since we are talking budget and since our community might be watching, I think it's important to convey that we are in a position to make some really significant investments in technology hardware, replacing some end-of-life MacBooks that are really important for some of the high-end applications that our kids are involved with. I would use this as an opportunity, again, to tell the community that the committee is interested in us conducting a kind of a refresh look, a new look of the conditions of our middle schools. And so there is a modest investment that we're making to ensure that we have the latest and greatest information about all the systems, all the components associated with each of our two middle schools. Textbook replacement, the committee also got behind a ensuring that we have the tools available to us to do benchmark assessments with students. And then also important to the committee was making sure that we were making an investment using the FY21 funds in some additional security and camera equipment. We've been fortunate to build out our infrastructure for cameras and to ensure that our campuses are safe and that we're able to understand the movement of of people in and out of our building. And so those are some of the investments that we are making with FY21 funds. That's this year's budget. But I thought it was important to use this as an opportunity to mention that once again. So again, to go back to that critical question, and I know this is where a lot of the committee debated the liberation center last week, and and I'm sure you'll want to talk a little bit more about it, and I'll be quiet. Is is that critical question of of developing a budget that is reflective of FY21, but understanding we will be in a position to apply stimulus funds, to reallocate funds within the existing budget to make sure that we can be responsive to the path that this pandemic takes? We will be in a position to be responsive to student academic and social emotional needs. Again, leveraging stimulus funds, leveraging the voted budget. And if need be, to work with town officials, if what we, if what we're planning, if the needs are greater than what we have, we are projecting right now. So that leaves us to the next steps next week. In all likelihood, the committee will once again review and vote the, perhaps take a vote on the FY22 budget. We will want to reach out to the town and see if the select board is interested in us presenting your voted budget to that board. And then ultimately, annual town meeting in May. So I appreciate you giving this space and time to present the budget that we are proud of. I want to thank our administrative team for coming together on on this plan. I want to thank Tom Mazza for painstakingly developing the the documents that project out the FY22 budget. I've been associated with many challenging budgets in my dozen years or so as a superintendent. I think the the projections that we are working on for FY22 are about as challenging as as any year that I that I can recall. So I appreciate Tom's diligence in in helping us put together the budget, the detailed budget documents that were in your packet. So with that, I will, I can either stop the screen share or I can refer back to any slides that you might need. Let me know what would be helpful.
Thank you. Just for the for the sake of procedure, Diane, can you just remind me, are we having committee members ask questions and comment at this point? Or am I moving to the public hearing at this point?
So normally, you would just move and offer it to public hearing and ask if anybody in the public had comments. And then afterwards, school committee can.
Thank you. So we will officially open the public hearing on the budget. The public has an opportunity to ask questions, provide their impressions of the FY22 school budget. The rules for public comment will be in place. It will be a three-minute limit and try to add something new from somebody who spoke before you. If there's any public comment, please let me know now. Seeing none, committee members, do you have any comments or questions that you have? Of, I'm sorry, first, I have to officially close the public hearing. The public hearing is closed. Now, committee members, do you have any questions or statements? Susie, then Gianna.
Thank you. Thank you again to Marty and to the administrative team for putting together this budget and with all the considerations. And certainly, it is a challenging year to, you know, again, we're still facing the situation where we don't have the crystal ball about what will happen next fall. So we're trying our best guess. But this budget is based in, from what I've seen, on no social distancing restrictions. Yet you explained earlier, Dr. O'Shea, that if the six-foot requirement was in place, we'd be able to use federal stimulus funds to hire back positions to ensure adequate social distancing. My concern is that that doesn't take into account the schools where adding staff will not fix the problem if there is a six-foot social distancing issue to contend with, namely Glenn Brook and Williams and potentially the high school. And in general, it's important to note that we haven't considered alternate distancing guidance from Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which is three feet to six feet. Can you speak to this? I I don't want any of our students in a hybrid situation next year. and would even suggest considering revisiting the distancing guidelines for the remainder of FY21.
So I appreciate the question, and I appreciate that focus on the assumptions that are built in into this budget. It does, the recommended budget would assume that we would not need to have in place those social distance standards that have required us to be in a hybrid arrangement. And so, again, as you said, not having a crystal ball, the hope would be that as vaccinations, as vaccinations increase, we would see a corresponding drop in community spread. I think we also know much more about the virus, although the variant is still something that we're trying to understand. And so I think I would agree with you that we do not want to be in that hybrid arrangement again next year. And that there is, as I think you had said earlier, Susie, there's no amount of staffing that we can sort of have for the middle schools that would allow us to educate all middle schoolers in person with a six foot standard. You know, the only way we can improve the experience for our middle schoolers would be to, next year, operate on a less than six foot standard to be in a sort of traditional pattern. And so, you know, the hope and expectation would be that the path of the pandemic and the availability of vaccines would put us in a position to not have to do the hybrid arrangement that has been such a challenge for families and kids and for teachers. And so I think that is, that is the question that we will have to continue to pursue. I do not, again, no crystal ball, but the hope would be that as vaccination levels increase and that we will be able to access that at less than six foot standard next year.
Thank you. Gianna had the next question.
Thanks, Ryan. Bronwyn, is yours a follow up to Suzie's? Because I can wait.
It is. Thank you. Dr. O'Shea, I was just wondering, at the middle schools and the high school, if they did say that, for some reason, it's a three foot distance, would we be able to accommodate our six through 12 students for full, everyday school?
At a three foot standard?
Yeah.
So that's the sort of pressure testing that we would have to engage in. We mapped it out with the six foot standard. And, you know, knowing now that at a six foot distance, there's no way we can, we simply don't have the opportunities to educate all of our middle schoolers in person at the six foot standard. We'd have to do that, that full pressure testing with next year's enrollment to understand if we can get everybody in at that, at that three foot standard. I don't know if Beth or Nicole have any preliminary thoughts on that, but our pressure testing to date really is focused on the six foot standard that we've operated with.
Yeah, I would say we have to run the same kind of things we did when we did the six feet in the classrooms, just to be sure, using the class sizes that we believe will be the projected ones for this upcoming year.
I guess I'm just, I think I'm very hopeful and feel extremely positive that we'll be back to school in a normal situation next year, maybe even back three feet at some point this year. But we don't know that for sure next year. So the staffing and things aside, I guess the space, nothing being in the budget for the space is a little concerning to me because nobody wants anyone K through 12 in hybrid. But specifically speaking about six through 12, because that's what we can't handle right now. So I don't want to be negative. I want to be hopeful that we will return to pre pandemic budgets and classrooms and settings, but I'm a little bit apprehensive that there's nothing in the budget if that's not the case. And I know we have the other funds. I guess I just want to make sure that's enough. I don't mean just for staffing. We would have to figure out something to get the kids in, which would require maybe some, I'm not sure, facility stuff.
Yeah, are you talking even some portable spaces and to allow for additional classrooms? Is that kind of where you're thinking about?
Whatever it takes. It's definitely not my forte to, like, building and facility stuff. And luckily, we do have a great team for that. But again, I don't want to be negative and say, when we get back, there could be three foot distance, and that means that grade six or grade eight maybe at Williams is not going to be able to be in full. I just feel like that can't be our outlook. We have to have the ability to get the students in. And we can maybe, I don't know, maybe assume we would have a three foot distance. I'm not sure if they would just, I mean, the CDC could just totally wipe out the distance requirement. I don't know that that would happen. And I know no one has a crystal ball. I understand that. But I don't want to get to September and we don't have enough space for our kids six through 12.
Marty, I'm sorry to interrupt, but a quick clarifying question. So you're wondering about three feet distance, whether or not there's space? And if there's not, we would need some sort of portables?
I guess so. I guess maybe.
So, yeah, well, now I'm going to follow up again. So wouldn't the idea to be not right now to necessarily apply in for portables, but to basically ask administrators to get out the guard stick and go find out? Because they might go to us two weeks from now and say, yeah?
No, that would be, that would be great. I guess I was saying, in the event that that wasn't the case.
Well, we don't know yet. Nicole, I see you waving your hand.
Yeah, I don't even know if I'm allowed to do that. I'm sorry.
I'm calling on you. Go ahead.
Well, I'm just going off of the fact that we spend so much time measuring for the six feet that I'm guessing, based off middle school, if we can fit 12, you probably can fit 24 then, right? So I just, I don't know that, but I think we may, the problem is is that on any given year, depending on our algebra classes, we're going to have more kids than 24. And we definitely can't fit more than 24 in a science lab, no matter what during a normal year. So I have no problem running these kinds of things in classrooms, just to be sure, and getting that information back to you if we need to, so.
Thank you. Obviously, you know, having the same job you all have, I ran those same things back in July. And as soon as they told me the three foot, I went into about four rooms and went, three foot's fine. I can fit everybody. So it really, you all can go do that, and then we might be fine and not have to worry about it. So that would be good information to have sometime in the near future.
Bronwyn, I think we would access, I would want to stand on my head to make sure that we can get everybody in at whatever standards exist and access available stimulus funds, access allocations within the existing budget, and even, you know, be sure that we're talking to town officials about what our specific needs are. And, you know, I have confidence that, you know, working with the school committee and with town officials, that we would be able to articulate exactly what our needs are. I think you're spot on with that, and we would want to make sure that we're in a position to make sure that we can get everybody in at whatever standards exist, assuming it's not a, you know, assuming it's not a six foot standard. Six is always going to be possible to get everybody in.
So what if, what if that did happen? Because you were talking about before that we do have backup, like contingency plans, kind of, if we do have to keep the six foot distancing. But we really don't have backup plans for six through 12, only K to five for staffing. Again, I'm not trying to be negative. I'm just trying to say that we don't know what the fall is going to bring. And it looks like we do have contingency plans for staffing for K to five with the federal stimulus funding and things like that. But what do we have for six through 12?
I would say that, let's say that we are not post pandemic next year and that we need to respond to some really challenging social distance standard. I think, you know, part of the assumption would be that we wouldn't necessarily just duplicate the strategies that we have in place this year, we necessarily duplicate those next year. So for example, we've had a lot of success with having dedicated cohort C teachers and as a way to, you know, create community for those cohort C students. And so that's something that we could look at, you know, is that something that we want to commit to or think about for other grade levels? So I think that we would, we would go back to the drawing board, K-12, to come to you with a plan for how we might respond to, in terms of staffing and services, how we're going to respond to any social distance standards that are still in place next year. And again, and Tom, maybe you could speak to the opportunities that we might have to talk to town officials about, you know, the types of allocations that would carry us through if we still found ourselves in a, you know, having to respond to the pandemic. If there's anything else you could add to that?
Well, I think you kind of hit on the avenues we would pursue, Marty. You know, depending upon what the amount of resources we need to support the staffing, I think we'd want to make sure we have an open, two way to come dialogue with town in regards to what those restrictions are and how we plan on addressing the needs of getting students back next year. So I would say just regular, ongoing dialogue as information becomes available to us next year.
I do want to add that six through 12, the teachers have been amazing. And it seems like the students are doing a really good job as well. But I think we're all on the same page that we would want everyone back, have the opportunity to get back in the classroom next year and not have the teachers teaching in a hybrid situation.
Gianna, you were next and first. Do you have your question?
I have two, so I have a follow up to that. Tom, so my school was in portables for a long time after the tornado. And I remember we had to plan for everything. And, you know, the money that came to us was so targeted and earmarked. Like, do you know if the grants or the stimulus that might be coming to Long Meadow, do you know if they would even allow for using some of that money for portables or?
I haven't really seen much information yet on the SR2 funds, but I believe it's pretty flexible in terms of its use. And I think if it's going towards ensuring that more students have an in-person learning experience next year, I think that would qualify for utilization of those funds.
Okay, because that might be something, you know, I just remember there was like the liability and all the different things that went with it in terms of those funds. So that'd be great if we could maybe find out a little bit more if they would be restricted or if portables could be an option. Ryan, is it okay to go for my second question? So Superintendent, thanks so much again for the, you know, for this great overview and for all of you for updating and editing and inserting more information. I wanted to ask you about the, a lot of the language around professional development. You know, one of the earlier slides, it's geared towards, you know, teachers, teachers in writing. And I just want to make sure that, if you can just share with everybody, that, you know, our goals are so, you know, pervasive throughout the district and throughout the staff, that when you're talking about professional development, that there's opportunities for, you know, again, I'm a counselor, I get counseling professional development. You know, I just want to, I just want to be sure that when you say professional development, it's for, you know, district PD, school-based PD, content-based PD for everybody.
Yeah, for sure. I think sometimes there's universal PD that applies to all. So.
Losing your audio there, Marty. I can't hear you.
Maybe I can jump in, Marty, while you're trying to fix your sound.
Marty, I sent you a text of something to try as well.
Did he say, go ahead, Sue?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you.
Can you hear me? Okay.
Barely.
Go ahead. Let me see if I can work on this, and you guys go ahead.
Okay. Jan, your question was kind of, I think, just to rephrase it, is our PD encompassing of everybody, right, in the district? And really lately, we've really been trying to include everybody on our big goal professional development, including our office staff and even our custodians and our anti-racist presentations. So absolutely soup to nuts. Everybody that we can get on board, we do. And then we have content specific for our adjustment counselors and our guidance counselors and our, you know, foreign language people and things like that. But, you know, for our overarching goals and district improvement goals, we really do our best to get everybody involved in that professional development in the way that's appropriate for them.
Perfect. And that's what I figured, Sue, and thanks for explaining that. I just, again, for people who might be watching and who might not understand that those other opportunities exist for, you know, again, councilor, speech people, you know, that kind of stuff. And just the messaging around sometimes, it's teacher centric, which I understand teachers make up, you know, make up most of our staff. But so thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks for asking.
Jamie, I think I saw your hand earlier.
Yep. Can you hear me? Good. Yep, no, but thanks, Ryan. And I think everyone's made some really good points about kind of, what are we going to be dealing with next year? The only thing I would just caution everybody with here is getting a little bit too into the minutia of this whole thing and kind of step back and go, when we did the 2021 budget, did we plan for a pandemic? No, we adapted. We changed. We made whatever adjustments are with the $38.7 million that was given to us by the town. And we figured it out. We're going to end up with a million dollars potentially at the end of this year. You know, we appropriated over $400,000 last week, so we spent some of it for investments in next year. Great. Last year, we gave back a million dollars to help the town for our 2021 budget. So as we go into 2022, even though it feels like we should plan for the pandemic, plan for three feet, plan for zero feet, plan for an earthquake, tornado that hits a school, if you get into that. that, you can't focus on the high level point of this. Is, is $39 million enough to do what was laid out by the team and accomplish the goals, whatever comes our way? I mean, we could have another pandemic, a different one that we're all worrying about next year and we'll have to adapt. I just kind of like looking at it as a high level. If somebody's giving us $39 million, is that enough to do everything Marty laid out? I personally think it is. I think it's plenty. I mean, every year, we're, we're ending with an extra million dollars of where we could go out and buy portables or add what we think is appropriate at that point. So I, I just, I hate, you know, getting into every scenario. I can make up 100 scenarios that may or may not happen. None of us could have picked that we were going to be down with a pandemic this year. We did not plan for it in 2021. But guess what? We still have a million dollars left at the end of 2021. So, you know, I wouldn't get too much into the minutia. I think what was laid out is just very nicely at a high level and kind of try to focus more on that than what if. I guess my what if is, hey, it's seven months from now. If we're not in the classroom, a half a foot away from, three foot away from each other, obviously, something else happened, we'll adapt. But let's focus on the positive of it that I sure hope we're back full time in school by the time fall starts. So. That was it, Ryan.
Thank you, Jamie. Suzie?
Yeah, just as a follow up to that. And I, I want to be very clear that my, my intent was not to suggest that the budget recommendation is not appropriate for moving forward. My intent was to just be, just highlight something that I think needs to be very transparent. And that is that there are, you know, we can throw, you know, the discussion of, of staffing was mentioned. We can, we can hire all the staff we want, but it doesn't change the physical boundaries of a building. And that was my only concern. And that I think there are other ways that we can't, we, we do have other guidelines that we can work within and potentially start to work within, you know, besides the six foot standard, we do have a three foot standard that is on the book somewhere that we could consider as we continue to plan and be prepared for that kind of eventuality versus, and, and we'd be in a better situation versus spending more money. I'm not necessarily looking to spend any more money than $39 million. I'm just looking to make sure that we are as prepared as possible and we're, and, and it's as transparent as possible to the public, the challenges and, and, you know, sticky wickets that we do have to face moving forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Kevin? Oh, sorry, Marty, you over.
Go ahead. I'll let Kevin jump in. I don't know if you can hear me okay now.
Yep, we can.
Thank you.
Yeah, the sound is great, Marty. I, I just want to throw in my, my thoughts about this, which is, you know, it seems to me like we're going to get our teachers vaccinated. I don't know at what point this year that's going to happen. I know we're all frustrated that it's not going to happen sooner. But I, I'm optimistic that we're going to get our teachers vaccinated this school year. If that happens, next school year, our teachers are going to be safe. The vaccines work. They're highly effective. Even if they don't prevent you from getting COVID, you get a much milder version of COVID and you don't die and you don't go to the hospital. So it's going to be a very different, it's going to be very different next year for our teachers. Are our kids going to be vaccinated? Probably not. So our kids are likely going to have to still wear masks. We likely will still have kids in cohort C because they won't be able to come to school because they won't have a vaccine. So it's not going to look like pre COVID. But my prediction, my hope is that we will be in the scenario that we're all talking about, which is vaccinated adults, kids who are wearing masks at three feet, and everybody back in school. So again, I don't know if that's how it's going to play out, but that's my best guess right now. And I think that means for everybody involved, don't think we're going back to normal, but do think we're going to have all our kids back in the schools. And if that's not the case, we're going to have to pivot based on the budget we have right now and do the best we can. So anyway, that's my thought.
Thank you, Kevin. Anybody else?
Ryan, you may not be able to see me.
Go ahead, Marty.
I, I, I so appreciate sort of having that conversation about the, I think the what if conversation is, is a really important one that Bronwyn and, and Suzie are bringing up. Because I think if ever there was a year that we need to have that laid out to the select board and to the community, this is one of those years. We really do need to be fully transparent to let this community know that we feel like we're well positioned for next year with the budget that's recommended and with the stimulus funds that are available to us. But, you know, beyond that, we, we may need to work with town officials to, to make sure that we can get kids in buildings for in-person learning. I, I think, I think it is, you know, if we do have the opportunity to sit down with the select board to sort of present the budget the way we have in past years, that, that probably needs to be an important part of that conversation that there's, there are some unknowns that we all need as a community, working with the select board and the school committee and the administration, we all need to respond to and make sure that we're doing the best we can for kids.
Thank you. Anybody else? So I guess I'll wrap it up by saying I appreciate the effort, as has been said before by the, by the team. Obviously, you're going to get new assignments shortly. We all continue to adapt to the situation and finding out about how much room you have at three feet, what other spaces you have that could be used for classrooms that haven't been used for classrooms. Those are the kind of things that we're going to have to do to make sure that we can fit and find out how many kids we can fit, hopefully without portables, because those are never fun. But as few as possible, I guess, would be a great way to look at that. So thank you all very much for your input as usual. And that will conclude the budget portion. Right now to administrative reports. Marty, do you have more to share?
No, I think I, I hit on everything. I just, you know, would say that we are continuing to work with town health officials to understand what the opportunities are to coordinate vaccinations for our staff. We're gathering the questions. Frankly, there's not a lot of answers at this point. But as soon as we have some concrete information about timeline and, and how and when that, those vaccinations are going to happen, we'll get that information out. And I just would put a plug into any community members watching to thank them for their attentiveness to our health and safety standards and remind everyone how important it is to screen children before they are sent into school to make sure that we are not creating close contact situations. So that's, that's, that's a plea to the community to continue to work with us on that. And if you have questions, our, our school nurses, our administrators stand ready to help and support. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. My only report is to say the same thing. Please do your best to follow the rules so that we can keep schools as full and operating as possible. We already had a few short closings and we would like that to not happen. So please monitor yourselves and your children so that we stay open. Two, I don't see maximums. So no student report tonight. Any other reports? Nope. Any subcommittee reports? Nobody has anything to add for there. We have no other ongoing business.
Sorry, sorry, we do. Curriculum Subcommittee met last week and we just, we got a preview of the educational opportunities guide from the high school, which is exciting. And I think at the, at a subsequent meeting, at a, at a meeting coming soon, we'll, we'll hear about that. That was exciting to get a preview of, of what's to come. We talked about the, meeting the educational needs of students who are exceeding grade level standards. That was a, a great discussion. We had some get visitors and share some, some of their experiences and that, that came away with an action plan. And I think that was it that we discussed. So I want to thank the curriculum Subcommittee and the administration for their work on that.
Thank you. Any of the other subcommittees have a report? Gianna? Gianna, go ahead.
Sorry, I couldn't. Apologies. Superintendent, do you want to report out on the policy Subcommittee? Or should we just do that next week?
No, I'm happy to. We had a couple policies under consideration based on some advice from our attorney and some, some communication from the state AG's office and some new Title IX regulations. We have a new Title IX sexual harassment policy that was reviewed by Policy Sub and will be brought to the committee on next Tuesday night for first reading. So that's a new sexual harassment policy. And then from that, we also will have sort of a more general harassment policy that, that incorporates those things, not covered by the Title IX related policy. So you'll see that in your meeting packet next Tuesday night. Thank you, Gianna.
Any other Subcommittee reports? We have no ongoing business or new business. So we are down to a possible motion.
I move that the school committee adjourn the February 2nd, 2021 school committee meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, I will call for a roll call vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Seven zero. We are adjourned. Thank you all.